I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
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 Great. Before we begin tonight, we have a public hearing on proposed charter amendment nominations and elections. But I wanted to draw people's attentions to our agenda items this evening because we're starting something new tonight. On each of our agenda items, you will see, as in the past, we have our environmental impact of action, our fiscal impact of action, and now we've added our racial equity impact of the action we're discussing. There's something new that we have begun to add to our agenda packets. I thank the staff for beginning this initiative, and, you know, this is a work in progress. We started discussing this back in January at our retreats when we had a presentation by the National League of Cities on the importance of racial equity and how we can work towards it in the city. Councilmember Smith and I wrote a piece on this, so if you'd like to get more background information, it's on the city's website, and we will have a resolution on this in a couple of weeks and have some further discussion. But I just wanted to draw people's attention to a new practice that we have put in place this evening. Okay, let's get to the public hearing on the proposed charter amendment nominations and elections. This public hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comments on the proposed charter amendment. If adopted, the charter amendment would change the date of city elections from odd-number years to even-number years. It would set the term for the mayor and the city council elected in 2017 to one year. It would change the date of the nominating meeting to the second Tuesday after Labor Day in an election year. It would extend the time for certification of election results and change the day on which newly-elected mayor and council members take office. The public hearing notice was published twice in a newspaper of general circulation as required. However, there was an error in the day of the week in the listed advertisement, so as a result, the notice will be republished, and a second public hearing has been scheduled for April 26th. So we'll have the public hearing tonight, and we are re-putting out the notice again, and we'll have another public hearing on April 26th. If adopted, according to the new schedule, the charter amendment will become effective on June 29th, 2017. Let's see, Mr. Jeffrey Nolnosbaum signed up first, so if you'd like to speak to this.
Yes. I've spoken here on this before, and I've sent you guys comments, so I'm going to keep myself brief and just stick to one thing that was mentioned the last time you took public comment specifically on this issue, which was the issue of the length of the term if you're going to change the years. It seems to me it's just having a council in place for one year is not worth, and having people come to the polls, you know, after one year is not worth it. I don't think people are clamoring to have, and will be clamoring to have, an election, you know, in that first year. I think three years is a good time. I don't think it's a wise use of our resource, the city's resources, to go ahead and just hold a one-year election for a one-year term. So, again, you guys already know that I'm against making the change, but if you're going to do it, I just suggest it's a better use of resources to not waste it, an election doing a one-year term.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other comments on this item? No other comments? All right then, we'll move on then to our other agenda items this evening. We're going to change one thing in our agenda this evening and move our voting items before the presentation of the city manager's proposed FY 2018 budget. So that's the only change for our agenda this evening. Moving forward, tomorrow evening, April 6th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the Azalea Room, we will be having a budget open house, so I hope, obviously, our city manager's very happy about this. We're trying something a little new this year, and so hopefully, people will watch tonight and listen to the presentation, and then tomorrow night's a chance to informally interact with members of the staff, ask questions about the budget, and it's an open house from 7:00 to 9:00, so you can come at any time, stay as little or as long as you would like. So that's tomorrow, April 6th, from 7:00 to 9:00 in the Azalea Room. And then on Friday morning, we have another community coffee for wards four and five from 8:00 to 9:30 at Natress Tea at 720 Erie Avenue. That's Erie and Flower. And while we're focusing on wards four and five, members of the community from other wards are also welcome to attend. That brings us then to next week, Wednesday, April 12th. We will have a public hearing on the city manager's proposed FY 2018 budget, so if you would like to come and speak to the budget, we have a public hearing next week. We have quite a number of items on our voting session. Resolution providing comment on the subdivision of Ethan Allen and Jackson Avenue. Resolution encouraging Tacoma Park landlords to house refugees. A single reading ordinance approving a contract for renovation of the IT server room. Single reading ordinance approving a contract for replacement of police interview room video system. And a single reading ordinance approving a lease agreement for two electric vehicles for the neighborhood services team. Our work sessions on April 12th, the first one will be an update on the Piney Branch Elementary School feasibility study, and then an update on the library renovations. Those are our two work sessions. And then on Monday, April 17th, the city council will meet here for a budget work session. We will be discussing capital projects on Monday, April 17th. During our regular meeting on Wednesday, April 19th, we have two voting items. One is a resolution committing the city council, oh, this is our one on racial equity, so this is our racial equity resolution, and then we also have a voting item, a resolution for providing for appointments to committees. Our work session on Wednesday, April 19th, will be a discussion of police chief recruitment, characteristics qualifications, and process moving forward. Monday, April 24th, we have another work session. It will focus on council priorities. I will be calling into that work session, that meeting, so Mayor Pro Tem, you're on for April 24th, okay?
I'm happy to sit in if Carrie doesn't want to.
And then on Wednesday, April 26th, we have a public hearing on the constant yield tax rate, public hearing on FY 2018 budget, and a public hearing on the charter amendment on nominations and elections. This is regarding the election date change. Our voting session that night will be the first reading charter amendment to the nominations and elections resolution. Our work session on Wednesday, April 26th, excuse me, is a discussion of city traffic calming practices and recent projects. This will be partially a follow-up from the Safe Roadways Committee presentation from a couple of weeks ago. And then we'll have our budget work session, which will focus on budget reconciliation. Monday, May 1st, we have another budget meeting on a Monday. We'll go over departmental and non-departmental budgets and budget reconciliation. And then Wednesday, May 3rd, we have a presentation of the summary results of the Tacoma Junction Community Consultation Feedback and our final budget reconciliation. We'll be there. I'll take this into May. Oh, busy month.
It is a really busy month.
Okay, now this evening, I'll take public comments on voting items. The first voting item is the single reading ordinance authorizing additional funding for the door security hardware and ID software project. Any public comments on that?
A lot of comments on this one.
Yeah, lots.
Take your time.
All right. Our next voting item tonight is a resolution ratifying execution of a consent order in the matter of the city of Tacoma Park versus Marciella Properties?
Marciella.
Marciella Properties. Any?
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue. It seems as if, in the matter of winding hillway, the council has considered two options: potentially costly and risky litigation, or the settlement that's part of tonight's proposed resolution. I suggest a different strategy. Drop the litigation, let the property owner keep their gate, and let the city keep its $15,000. This strategy is not without cost. City vehicles will continue to need to turn around at the end of winding hillway rather than passing through the alley. I timed a trash truck doing so today. It took about two minutes. If my math is right, with a two-person crew, that translates to about $2 in staff costs. $15,000 would pay for 7,500 such turnarounds, meaning our investment would take decades to pay off. It seems better to absorb the cost of turning vehicles around rather than paying the $15,000. Now, it may be that we're doing this to help out folks on winding hillway. Certainly, if the plan to make this a local, traffic-only route is realized, it won't help anyone else. And I don't know whether the neighbors would place more value on the gate being open during the day or the gate being closed at night. In any case, looking at who benefits suggests that the neighbors talk directly with the owner, have the neighbors and the owner come to an agreement, and have the neighbors pay the owner for considerations received. With 17,000 residents, this proposed settlement costs about a dollar per resident. I hope the council will find a better use for my tax dollar. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this voting item? Okay, general public comments this evening, then? Yes, Mr. Lovelace, go ahead.
Yes, my name's Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. I want to give you people a notice and stuff because we're having some demonstrations coming up that are real important. One of them is on the 22nd, and it's about the science research that Donald Trump wants to cut away at. And also, we're having a climatic justice demonstration on the 29th, I believe it is, 28th or 29th?
29th.
29th? Thank you. And also, I'd like to ask people if they can come down, come down to our demonstrations, if you can tell all your friends about it. We need many people down there. The bigger it turns out, the more effective we'll be. And also, if you've got any violent tendencies, leave those, leave those behind. We don't need violence. It's absolutely useless. And I'd like to ask the city of Tacoma Park, if they could, if they could ask the schools to educate the kids on this, and also see if we can put in the school curriculum, non-violence, both in and out of schools, so the kids have a better chance of not having guns in the class and anywhere else or using their fists. They don't need it. Also, I want to thank Candace Wolf and Bruce for bringing me down here tonight. They wheeled me down from the Franklin Apartments, and that's who brings me down now. So I want everybody to clap their hands for Candace, all right? Hey, Candace! And Bruce, all right? And also, I want to see what the status is on the, oh, on the Jazz Festival. Somebody says that they went there and it was the wrong day or something like that. Somebody was telling me about that. And I'd like to know what, how that's coming on, if they had a problem with that or not. And I'd like to, again, remind people out there that, yes, there'll be a folk festival. Yes, I'm very thankful for that. And I just want to invite people to come down to those two demonstrations because it's, they can make a difference between your life and your family's life and anyone else's. Just want to tell everybody, please, work for peace. Don't use violence. You don't need it. I never needed it. I got through life in some pretty hairy situations, too, that never needed violence. It doesn't work. We tried for millions of years. It does not succeed, so why keep banging our head against the wall and doing something that doesn't work? Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, love it, love it, love it.
Good evening, Paul Hubner, Carroll Avenue. I'm here to implore you not to raise property taxes. I would like, my, I think that the council should have as a goal to get at least at or below the constant rate yield, all right? In further research, after producing a budget document, I found that city expenditures have been over $2 million less per year over the last nine years than city revenues. So that means there's money, there's money accruing. I don't know where it's getting funged into, but I'm feeling flim-flammed. If necessary, take the $800,000 out of that instead of raising property taxes. The county raised property taxes last year, and they're considering raising them again right now at 7:00 o'clock tonight, okay? Schools are growing at the rate of 2,500 students per year, and they're going to get the money someplace. So the money, the desire for money is coming at the property owners from all directions. Now furthermore, we're hollowing out our city. We're becoming a city of rich and poor. When I moved here, a third of the people were working class in 1989, a third were minority, and a third were yuppies or white, you know, professionals. Now, it's not like that at all. It's totally different. Working people cannot afford to live in this city. Try and get your work done on your house, and you'll see what I'm talking about. We're hollowing out the city. Nationally, household debt is less than 1% different than it was in 2008. Combine that with the Republican Congress, with Paul Ryan at the helm, and the Congress is going after Medicaid, then they're going after Medicaid, then they're going after Social Security. The most vulnerable populations are going to get decimated by this, and it's not a place for the city to be involved in taking what little money they have. Finally, I'd like to ask, I've seen one council member, and I'll name him, Tim Mail, come out with an absolute, with a positive approach to trying to bring expenses in line with income. I would like to, for each one of you at the next meeting, to say what positive measures you've brought forth to reduce expenses and accrue money back to the property owners. Property taxes are out of hand. You know, 42% last year for the county, and the city's getting their share. And I just, you know, I implore you to do this, and every one of my neighbors I've talked to is opposed to a property tax increase, and I plan to use this as a stepping stone. This is just opening, this is early openers, because people have had enough, at least the people I know. Everybody on my block, a lot of the people in the neighborhoods surrounding, a guy walking up the street today. So I would just, I'd like to do this the nice way, but, you know, like, they cleaned house in DC and maybe talked for Tacoma Park.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Good evening, members of the council. Juan Luis Torres, 900 Elm Avenue, Tacoma Park. He said most of what I was going to say, so I'm not going to repeat the same, and great job, sir. Mr. Mail, also, I want to thank you for what you posted out there, and I want to commend each one of you for coming out and making out a great budget. But we are in a crisis right now nationally. There are a bunch of individuals that live in this town that are living on a fixed income, and it's going to be impossible for them when, as you get older, your health care is going to cost you more, because those are the deal, the deal-makers want to make, for you guys to consider that in the local government, we're going to lose control of these matters, and we're going to raise taxes on these individuals. Yeah, I've been here since 1987. One time, I even had the opportunity to serve the city, and it was a great opportunity, and I met a lot of things at the same time. But one thing that can be done is control taxes. All great societies have been destroyed by individuals that take the opportunity to destroy the opportunities that people have to live responsible to themselves by taxing them. So if you can, and I know it's possible, trust me, I do this consistently, consider what can be cut. Go home tonight. It's not just, you know, sometimes I'm told that, forgive me, perhaps not here, that council people read the budget at the very end in preparation for that evening. I pray that you don't, that you do take the time to study it really well good and consider all the people that we have in Tacoma Park. Every one on my street is claiming, Torres, are you going to go speak? Yeah, I am going to have to go say something. I seldom like to come here because I don't like to bother too many people, but I like to live peacefully with everything. But in as much as it is possible, Mr. Siemens, Mr. Schultz, Mrs. Mayor, please, don't do this. It will be totally irresponsible to the city of Tacoma Park and its residents if you really want the diversity that you so encourage. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments for this evening? I guess I'm heading to.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mayor, council, et cetera. Mary Jane Machui Ward, to resident of Tacoma Park for, I guess, 34 years now. Please, I know we're begging not to add taxes, but please consider disabled people and housing especially. I heard there's going to be a coalition between Montgomery County Coalition for the Homeless who came to a Posna meeting a couple months ago, and between the city and the county to buy their properties on Lee Avenue 125, 126, and they were talking about other properties, too, larger properties, which would be great because about a third of them would be rented out to low-income or disabled people, special needs. But please, please, I'll just speak individually. My son, who was born here in Tacoma Park, his father was from Kenya. He was seriously wounded, shot in the head, years before I met him. He's living, he's, we're now divorced. My son really needs a good job. He's 32 years old. He has higher functional autism, but he has a job, he doesn't know until the day before he has to go to work. And it's sad, he's 32 years, he's not 18. There's a lot of people like this. He works for the Hyatt Hotel, people in these service industries. It's like, really, it's driving me nuts because he lives with me, having to get him there and back. I don't know, sometimes the day before he has work or not, whether we can schedule a doctor's appointment. He's obese now, and I can't schedule a doctor's appointment, and many times I've had to call the last minute, "Doctor, I'm sorry, can't make it," and it's just, just really stressful. And there are a lot of people like him like that. A lot of disabled people, lucky enough to have jobs, they're in situations like this. They're treated with not, like, with respect, I would call it, and, and he's not getting a living wage. I mean, he's getting a wage, but it's not enough to live off of, so that's why he lives with me. So, thank you very much for listening.
Any other public comments this evening? No? Okay, we'll move on then. Tonight, we have an Arbor Day proclamation, so it's supporting Arbor Day 2017 in Tacoma Park. We'll read it for folks. It says, "Whereas trees are an important part of the character of Tacoma Park and provide many benefits to residents, such as improving air quality, reducing the need for air conditioning, serving as windbreakers, stabilizing soils, providing watershed protection, and providing wildlife cover and food; and whereas the urban forest division of the Department of Public Works, in coordination with the Tacoma Park Tree Commission and other interested residents, has organized an Arbor Day celebration; and whereas cities play a vital role in promoting and encouraging the protection and planting of trees and other environmentally sound practices; and whereas this event is designed for the local community to participate in Arbor Day activities; and whereas Arbor Days will be, Arbor Day will be celebrated on Saturday, April 8th, 2017, outside the Tacoma Park, Maryland Library, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.; and whereas the activities will include educational opportunities and the distribution of free tree seedlings; and whereas the Tacoma Park Tree Commission will be on hand to answer questions. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the city of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council, residents, and staff, do hereby proclaim support for the local environmental celebration of Arbor Day in Tacoma Park on Saturday, April 8th, 2017, and I encourage residents to participate." All right, now I'll turn to council comments. Any council comments this evening? Councilmember Kareshi?
Thank, one thing, I know, Mayor, we talked about this when we had a discussion generally at some point about when you go through the rolling agenda to highlight dates where we may want to have the city attorney here, and in the event, since he's here right now, in the event that he's not already invited to come, the April 26th meeting, because it involves a voting session about a potential charter amendment on the election issue, I think maybe, and we're going to have a public hearing as well, may be appropriate to have him here. I mean, I defer to my colleagues if people think it's not appropriate, but I thought that might be a good time to consider having the city attorney here. I'm just going to ask the city manager to provide an update on the Sligo Mill Overhill Playground and, overlooked playground. And I know last time we were here, there was some discussion of some relevant dates, six to eight weeks out from when we passed the equipment ordinance, but if there's any update on that, I'd ask for that. And finally, I just want to give a kudos to Jen Wafford and Tim Mail and countless others in the community, Carter Doherty, who were involved in a incredible prank on our mayor in regards to alpacas and llamas being present at our dog park. It went off beautifully, and it's, it's great to see that we can even mobilize effectively on all sides of an issue if it's completely made up. But as I said to Ward 3 residents, if you think, you can rest assured now that there's no issue or controversy with respect to alpacas at our dog park, but this is Tacoma Park, so don't hold your breath on that issue. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
I wasn't going to comment on, on this prank, but I think it was an insightful experience, having had a conversation at the dog park opening with our esteemed city manager about the foolishness behind spreading, you know, what, fake news? I guess that's what you can call it, about alpacas running in our dog park. Our city manager wisely observed that the reason I, and several of, a lot of us on the city council took it so seriously is that, from our point of view, this is Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council, residents, and staff, do hereby proclaim support for the local environmental celebration of Arbor Day in Tacoma Park on Saturday, April eighth, twenty-seventeen. And I encourage residents to participate." All right, now I'll turn to council comments. Any council comments this evening? Councilmember Koreshi?
Thank, um, one thing I, I know, Mayor, we talked about this when we had a discussion generally at some point about when you go through the rolling agenda to highlight dates where we may wanna have the city attorney here. And in the event, since he's here right now, in the event that he's not already invited to come, the April twenty-sixth meeting, because it involves a voting session about a potential charter amendment on the election issue, I think maybe, and we're gonna have a public hearing as well, maybe appropriate to have him here. I mean, I defer to my colleagues if people think it's not appropriate, but I thought that might be a good time to consider having the city attorney here. I'm, I'm just gonna ask the city manager to provide an update on the Sligo Mill Overhill Playground and, overlooked playground. And I know last time we were here, there was some discussion of some relevant date, six to eight weeks out from when we passed the equipment ordinance, but if there's any update on that, I'd ask for that. And finally, I just wanna give a kudos to Jen Wofford and Tim Mail and countless others in the community, Carter Doherty, who were involved in a incredible prank on our mayor in regards to alpacas and llamas being present at our dog park. It went off beautifully and it's, it's great to see that we can even mobilize effectively on all sides of an issue if it's completely made up. But as I said to Ward Three residents, if you think, you can rest assured now that there's no issue or controversy with respect to alpacas at our dog park, but this is Tacoma Park, so don't hold your breath on that issue. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
I wasn't gonna comment on, on this prank, but I think it's, it was an insightful experience, having had a conversation at the dog park opening with our esteemed city manager about the foolishness behind, uh, spreading of, you know, what, fake news? I guess that's what you can call it, about alpacas running in our dog park. Our city manager wisely observed that the reason I and several of, a lot of us on the city council took it so seriously is that from our point of view, this is not outrageous at all. This is the sort of thing, I think, as you said, Ms. Ludlow, that we deal with not every day.
Every day, pretty much.
But a lot, right? So, but anyway, it was fun. So, kudos to those who funk it up. Getting a bit more serious, I just wanted to say something about the, oh, the city budget open house tomorrow. I wanna say that, first of all, I take seriously the two common, comments that were made here just a few minutes ago with regard to the desire to keep or reduce our property tax rate. I take that, I listened to that, I take that seriously, always have. I am thrilled to pieces that we're gonna have this open house tomorrow because what I would really want, whoever's sitting here tonight or listening on, 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 on our city cable channel, is that we hear people say these things and ask for this. And frankly, I'm on a fixed, my wife and I were on a fixed income and the, the, the salary that I get as, as a city council member, you know, it's not gonna float many boats, I can tell you that, is something that we, you know, I value because of that fact. So I understand the concept of being on a fixed income. But what I would ask residents is that if you want us to reduce taxes, show up tomorrow night and talk to us about what programs you think would be, that would be deserved to be cut. Because, and I'm not trying to be ironic about this at all, is that we have people tonight talk about the need to reduce taxes, but we most of the time hear from other residents who want us to adopt new programs or embellish and enhance existing programs to better serve the, the residents, particularly the neediest residents of, of our city. And we take all that in and try to do the best we can. And sometime, and in order to do that, sometimes it, it affects the tax rate and our property taxes. So it's easy to come here and say, please do, please reduce our, our taxes, please cut expenses. But I would like people to come and actually comment in an informal setting like we're gonna be having tomorrow night and say, I think we could do without X, or we could do without Y, or we could reduce Z, or something like that. Because that helps, helps, is gonna help us understand. And, and then, you know, that, that starts to get talking in the realm of actual reality. So that's just a, an encouragement. I hope, whether you have any comments or not, that people will show up for this open house. Because Frank, you know, the, the, the most important job we have as a city council member after hiring, selecting and hiring the city manager is our annual budget process. And we, and it's really, it is, I mean, it makes all the change, it affects everything. So please, we would appreciate your input seriously and I would hope you, people will show up. Thank you.
Councilmember Mail?
Thank you. I'm gonna follow up on Councilmember Schultz's suggestion and I will be there tomorrow looking with interest for the same kind of feedback from residents. I think one of the challenges for people is that the budget is a complicated, two-hundred-page document. And it's, it's pretty hard to figure out as an average resident how to, what to cut. So for example, if someone asked me, Medicaid and Medicare were mentioned earlier tonight and we all know that one way or another, federal spending is, is difficult to balance right now. But if someone asked me, what would I do with Medicaid, or how would I try to make that program whole and support all the people that depend on it? I couldn't give you a clue, but I do want my congressional members to defend the program and make it stronger. And that's what I, I, I rely on them to do. So, if residents have specific suggestions, that's great, but, but I also think it's partly our job to come up with those, you know, those specific things because it's, it's obscure, things from pension fund investment to the period at which we take a loan, is it a twenty-year or thirty-year loan? Those things are really complicated issues that take a lot of hours of staring at budget documents as our city manager and our finance director and staff know, and my colleagues know. So I just, I, I think I welcome the feedback, but I think we, you know, we need to go beyond that. And I, I know Councilmember Schultz would, would agree with that. I also wanted to just bring up the issue that I hope we can have a discussion of in the future, and I suppose it would have a budget savings as well, which is the, the question of having the presence of, of police at our city council meetings. I think that's something, given the small size of our city and our police department, that having an officer not present for council meetings and out in the streets, you know, traveling his or her beat or doing the office work that all officers have to do, that's a small example of a savings. And if we could have a, a discussion about that in the future, I'd welcome that. Thank you.
All right. All right, I have a couple of items. One, I just wanted to, this week, the county council is receiving comments on their budget and I will be going tomorrow afternoon on behalf of the city and testifying regarding our requests that we have put in on a feasibility study at the campus of the Washington Adventist Hospital. George Leventhal and, our county council member, George Leventhal, and Tom Hucker have put in the request to the rest of the council for the reconciliation list. And so, we'll talk about that, as well as the request for a paramedic at our fire station. We are one of only two fire stations in the county that does not have a paramedic. And again, with the moving of the hospital, we are requesting that. We passed a resolution back in October on that and I'll be raising that. If other members of the council or residents would like to send emails requesting that, particularly to county council members, Mark Elridge, Tom Hucker, and Sidney Katz would be good people to speak with. They're on the relevant committee that will be taking up this issue. And I can share with, we'll share with council, we just finished the testimony this afternoon, the rest of the testimony. On Friday, I had the opportunity to meet with members of the staff, the new director of the State Highway Administration. We actually didn't know he was gonna be the director when we set up this meeting a few weeks ago. I met him when he, I was at the Maryland Municipal Mayor's Association a couple of weeks ago and discussed with him the issues we've been talking about, about state highway and how it operates in the city. And he said, I'm more than happy to come visit with you. And so, he did, and two days before we had the meeting, he was named the actual head of state highway. We weren't sure if he was gonna keep the meeting or not, but thankfully, he did and it was a very good meeting. We presented him and talked to him about big picture items such as New Hampshire Avenue, the Tacoma Junction redevelopment, the Flower Avenue project, and Ethan Allen Gateway project. Just to let you know, on the, when we were discussing these big projects, he did note and actually credit the city specifically on the Flower Avenue project. He said that our staff has, has, is really known around the state for the remarkable job they've done on this project and the way that they have been able to secure some of the federal dollars that many other localities have not been able to secure because of lack of expertise or figuring out the system and have basically left money on the table. Whereas here in Tacoma Park, our staff has been able to figure out the process, pull together these multiple utilities, multiple jurisdictions, get the easements, and move this project forward. So that's, that was nice to know that we're getting recognition outside of the city for that project. In addition, we, our director of public works, gate, went through a long list, I think almost ten specific areas in the city where we were having issues with state highway, including pictures of the different intersections. We walked through each of these with him. I've actually already received an email back that he said he's working right now on the issues right outside our community center. So hopefully that will get fixed soon. We did talk about having quarterly meetings with our Division, Division Three here of state highway so that we don't have these long lists to deal with. So I think it was a very productive meeting and we'll be doing follow-up on that. The next thing I'd like to do is just thank the staff for the opening of the dog park. I think it was, regardless of the radical joke that was played the day before, the opening of the dog park went very well. It's, it's really beautiful to look at and I just wanna thank our entire public work staff and everybody else who's worked on this project. This is really another one where there are multiple jurisdictions brought in and it looks terrific and so it's very exciting. The other thing I want to announce is our city attorney informed me this evening that our noise control board is up and running and is going to have their first hearing on Monday night, so.
Is it Monday night?
Yeah, I think.
Is this, is this?
The twenty-fourth.
Oh, the twenty-fourth, sorry.
The twenty-fourth of April?
Mm-hmm, so.
With regard to the.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm so pleased, I know, but I knew this was gonna happen, just wasn't aware of the date. This would be a very juicy case.
Okay. So, that's it. And then, finally, I'd also like to just thank the residents who have come already to talk about the budget and really as, you know, I went through the rolling agenda and there, we will be talking about the budget for the next month and a half and I really encourage residents to come and share their opinions. I just wanna share one of my favorite quotes about doing budgets and it's from Joe Biden. He said, "Don't tell me what you value, show me your budget and I'll tell you what you value." And I think that's a very good quote and something that I think as we go through our budget, we should keep in mind. And I will say, as my colleagues have said, I take very seriously the comments that have been said. We are living in very difficult times, making sure that we have the resources to help those most in need and using our budget to forward our values, such as affordable housing in this community and making sure that people have things like the home stretch program we've put in place and that for residents who are on fixed incomes and need it, that we actually have tax assistant programs that are in place as well. And so, those are things that we need to look holistically, not just at one figure, but holistically about what we're providing members of our community. So, with that, we'll turn now to our voting items. The first is a single reading ordinance authorizing.
Mayor.
Oh, I did it again!
I, I don't have very exciting things.
I did it again.
I guess you do.
Oh.
Mayor?
Yes?
I was also interested.
Oh, all right. You're, you're funny, your thing didn't pop up.
Oh, I did press the button.
Oh, okay, sorry, go ahead.
I'll make it really quick.
No, that is.
Thank you, sorry about that.
All right, sorry, it's not coming up there.
There are a couple of issues which I did raise with the, with public works, but I'm just gonna mention them. For city manager also related to Tulip Avenue, one, the cones have been there kind of forever and she said she hoped it would get taken down and replaced in, in April or May. So, we're in early April, so April or May is in sixty days. Obviously, it'd be great to have that happen sooner. And there was one incident, and I, I don't wanna blow it out of proportion, but where the public works vehicles kind of drove across a grass planted area with a small fence and the, again, the public works director mentioned she would be talking to the drivers about that, but I just wanted to mention that as a, something to take a look at. And just briefly on the budget, I do wanna echo some of the comments that my colleagues made. I'm very concerned about affordability here in the city, it's something that we talk about a lot. And I'm not going to now get into any of the specific programs, but I do think that it'll be essential for us to do everything we can to get our rate as low as we can. And that's what I'll be working on. Thanks. Thank you.
Now the city manager.
Thank you. In terms of my comments, follow-up from last council meeting, councilmember Mail asked about the lead and, and pipes and we don't have a definitive answer on that. The WSOC website has quite a lot of information, looking at their system as a whole and that it certainly gives the impression that, that they feel that there's no issue of lead throughout the system. That doesn't mean that there might not be a house or two that has a lead line and that that really is a case-by-case basis that we don't have information on. The recommendation that WSOC has is if somebody is concerned about their particular property that they would need to get a WSOC certified plumber to look at those lines. On the Tacoma Junction Community Consultation Update, we have gone through the various consultation meetings. Almost two hundred people attended the meetings, six hundred and thirty people completed the online surveys, which is terrific. And as Mayor mentioned, there will be report back to the council about the, the takeaways from those, from those meetings and surveys. The council will get a summary on May third. And that doesn't preclude other kinds of comments and a large amount of discussion in the future as, as actual site plans and proposals come forward. But I was very pleased that so many people did participate and that the, the meetings were interesting, so that's nice. The mayor mentioned Arbor Day with the proclamation, that's Saturday from ten to two on the library grounds. And the kinds of seedlings available, some of them I've not even heard about before. So there's reg, there's bald cypress, pitch pine, black oak, white oak, schumard oak, red maple, sweet gum, sycamore, red bud and popa, and cinnamon, and hazelnut trees. So many kinds of trees that people can choose. People are welcome to come and you can also talk to members of the Tree Commission and get advice. Wanted to let people know that we will be having some bus shelter ads coming up very soon that promote Safegrow in the city. It's something we've been looking forward to for some time, we had them designed some time ago. They should get up about April seventeenth. And we're also looking at having a photo contest of resident-generated pictures of gardens, flowers, et cetera, that were grown without the use of pesticides. So we're just gonna kind of make that fun and, and a way to share how lovely gardens can look without pesticides. I wanted to mention a kind of, something that I kind of laughed about this week, which had to do with police traffic enforcement. Had several different community complaints. One was about pedestrian safety on Maple Avenue near Sligo Creek and also at Philadelphia. And as a result, we had police doing some special traffic enforcement and then I got complaints from people who were enforced, who did get traffic tickets for doing the wrong thing. So, it's, one of the things that I appreciate the police department was proactive, but I know that it, it doesn't always feel good when you get the ticket too. So, we're, we're trying to have a good balance about how we deploy officers throughout the community and recognize that can't help everybody on these. I do wanna mention, we've, our arborist is coming on board, has finally signed off on all the papers. His name is Jan, Jan Van Supfen, I think, is how you pronounce it. He's, seems wonderful. I think the city will be really, will really benefit from his service. He's previously worked for City of Annapolis and City of College Park, as well as a number of other locations. So, I think it'll be fun, you'll see him and he'll be part of our efforts also to promote the tree canopy that we've been talking about. Wanted to give kudos to the folks on the opening of the dog park. It really was, it always helps when it's a lovely day. But it's a good park and, yeah, we didn't get the llamas and alpacas. But I, I do want to particularly emphasize that Nima Upatai from our public works department, she's always very nice and what, and she has managed to finagle through the various agencies to get the work done and get that park designed and, and implemented. And it's really, was very difficult. So, pleased with her work. Ian Chamberlain from public works oversaw the construction work. And we had Corporal Cindy Conrad and our officer Eric Mueller helped pull together the party for the grand opening and of course, you know, balloons with paw prints on it and the whole bit, it was a lot of fun. I also wanna give kudos to Kathy Collington and the police department for a number of appearances that he's recently done. He was asked to speak at a conference last Saturday entitled, "The Police Are the Public and the Public Are the Police." And he's been also going to the PTSA meeting at Rolling Terrace Elementary School and it's wonderful outreach for our community. On hiring update, we've not done anything in the last few weeks on the request for proposals for county lobbyist. proposals for county lobbyists. Our open positions are mostly the part-time positions for the summer coming up, and just, I just put out that I do plan on being out of the office from May 12th through 14th, when my son graduates from college, so that's my comments. Thank you.
Great. All right, now, we'll go to... Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember.
Could the City Manager just provide a little bit of detail in terms of what's needed to get the RFP or the position description for the lobbyist? My original expectation was that what we would use is basically the same kind of document that we use for the state...
Yes, it is.
But just replacing Annapolis with Rockville.
It's, it's actually not a lengthy process, it's just, it's just not been on the top, and it will be soon.
Is there a timeline for when that might get done? I'm just concerned because we authorized it in the last budget, and here we are at the next budget.
I don't know the timeline right this moment.
Okay. Could you follow up by next week?
I will.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the... All right, all right. Now, going to our voting items. The first is a single reading ordinance authorizing additional funding for the door security hardware and ID software project. Any background on this from the City Manager or the Deputy City Manager? Pretty self-explanatory?
Well, it's unfortunate, we had an undercount of equipment, so it's going to cost us more.
Okay. Any questions before I ask if someone would like to move this?
Just a quick question. Does this affect library access? And in a positive way, we had a conversation about that with, I think, library staff three or four months ago, and concerned about access between the library and the main building and then into the library itself.
Yes, it's included.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, great. Would someone like to move the ordinance?
So moved.
Councilmember Mail, second. Councilmember Schultz, any questions or comments? All right, with the clerk caller roll.
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Mail.
Aye.
Councilmember Koreshi.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes.
All right. Next, we have a resolution ratifying the execution of a consent order in the matter of the City of Tacoma Park versus Marselia Properties. If our city attorney would like to just give some background, since you're here.
Good evening. The, the consent order, settlement agreement, I recommend that the city enter into it. It's a, it involves a dispute over a alleyway between Winding Hill Way and Flower Avenue that's been used for many years by residents and city vehicles, but was not recorded in the land records as a right-of-way. And the property owner put gates at the end of the alley excluding residents and city vehicles and emergency vehicles. And we argued that we had a, had obtained an easement by prescription by using the right-of-way for 20 years. They, they argued the facts and claimed that, you know, that our use wasn't consistent. Given the, the costs and risks association, associated with litigation, I recommend this settlement is a, is a way to limit our expenses and ensure that we have the right-of-way available.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith, is your light on?
Yes.
Okay. For some reason, you and Councilmember Kovar aren't showing up in the requested, just let you know that.
There you go.
All right, so would you? Go ahead.
All right. I just want to say thank you very much for all your hard work on putting this agreement together. One question I have, have we figured out the key box for the residents and city personnel on the gate associated with Winding Hill Way?
I've talked with the Public Works Director, who is working on it, and I know she's leaning in the direction of not having a key box, but having just combination locks, so we don't have to worry about losing the key. I know she's making it a priority. I do not know the timeline to have that.
Okay. And so, do you think 30 days from now, we should see something?
I would think so, yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No, I just want to underscore, given the public comment we had earlier, that one of the concerns was not just garbage trucks, but emergency vehicles as well, and the ability to plow the road. And also, just to let folks know that this is something that we've been working on for over a year, probably a year and a half. So, just to give a sense of that.
Did you turn your light?
I did, yeah.
Sorry, you're not, because you don't show up. Okay. Councilmember Mail.
Thank you for being here tonight, and for, thank you for your, your work and the staff of the firm's work on this. I know it's been a long process. I intend to vote against this, because I'm still, I still don't understand the, the argument that we can't document consistent use, and yet, the alley is so critical to basic function of city trash, leaf pickup, and emergency vehicle use, that, that we couldn't live without it. So, those, those two things are just incongruous to me. And understanding the city's history and the residents along Winding Hills Way, willingness to speak about the frequency of use in the past, it just seems to me we have a convincing case that you have documented, and I know there are other perspectives on that, that we have, we have, we can document continuous use. I went out, and I assume all my colleagues have done this as well, but I went out and walked Winding Hill Way up to the gate, and then went around to the other ends, the other end of the gates on Flower Avenue. And it seems to me that there's, on the, on the parts before the gate on Winding Hill Way, before you get to the property of issue here, that there is quite a bit of space, for example, for an ambulance turnaround, a trash wreck might be a harder thing, but there is, every private property adjoining that, the lane, has extensive parking spaces built straight into the street, either paved or, or gravel, spaces for multiple cars. And there's a, there's an extensive area around the end of that street. So, you know, my view is that we, and thinking about public comment earlier tonight, that we would have been better to argue this case in court. We have, as a city, lots of other properties where we use private property without an easement being recorded, where there is access issues in terms of easement or no easement for rights of way to get to parkland, for example, in Ward 2. And I, just on this case, I would have preferred that we, we had chosen to argue our case in court, recognizing that if we lost, one of the options could have been to give up on having continuous use through the, through the site. The other thing I'd add is that, you know, local traffic only, we have heard again and again from our police chiefs, that local traffic only is not enforceable. So, if, if I, or Councilmember Kovar, or you, the city attorney, want to drive through Winding Hill Lane in the daytime, that it's not enforceable to be able to stop any of those cars from driving Winding Hill Way and crossing the property. And so, I just worry that one of the things we may hear from residents, given the traffic that sometimes exists on Piney Branch, is that cars are cutting through that area, and I just don't think there's anything we can do about that. At least, that's been the, that's been the argument to residents in other parts of the city in the past who have asked for, for local traffic only. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
You know, I just want to explain why I will support this, this, this resolution. And this is really not so much to agree with my colleague, Councilmember Mail. It basically, we've, we have, as, as the mayor has already said, we have spent a good deal of time on this matter. It's, it's, there's a certain oddness to the whole thing, is that something as so seemingly minor could absorb so much of our time. But the fact is, is that there is a very large gate that has been installed at some point in the not-too-distant past by the, by the property owner. And what, what we have worked out is an agreement that seems, in my opinion, to, to address the most critical issues, which is to say, access by and for emergency vehicles, ambulances, fire engines, and whatever, as well as, on occasion, for residents. The resolution also calls for, when the property that gets sold, that, on whose, where this gate is, then that, the easement that we're discussing here will expire, so that the gate can be removed at somebody's expense. But for the time being, my feeling is, is that while we may be right in taking this to litigation in court, we have, we have to consider the time on staff, on our city attorney, and the literal cost of litigation. And at some point, it's better just to get this matter closed out and move on, even though we may be getting the, perhaps, we might view as that the city might be getting the short end of the stick for the short term, or at least, by which I mean, until the property changes hands and gets titled in somebody else's name. And so, that's why I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Koreshi.
Thanks. I'm going to be supporting this today as a litigator. I recognize the amount of cost that could go into what I think, in the long run, is going to be an inconsequential, in terms of the end result and the, the benefit litigation. I, I think that the resolution is a good one. One thing I will say that I'm sort of confused about, I noticed that the consent order, in the last ordered paragraph for the judge's signature, says, and we had a discussion about this, Mr. Sigmund, a couple of weeks ago, so you may not be privy to it, it seems to be there might be some consensus on this dius up here about speed humps in general, and the future utility of them in our city and use of them. So, my question is, how did that all come about, the speed hump issue? And, and the reason I raise that is because I find the language to be a bit inconsistent. The consent order specifically says, within six months, we'll install speed humps, which means, to me, to be mandatory language, whereas the settlement itself says installing speed humps, if feasible under city law, which to me is more qualified or not, it's like permissible, you know, it's not mandatory. So, I'm just trying to understand why it was put in there in the first place, and then understand, do you, do you see that inconsistency, or maybe I'm reading too much into it?
Well, it was put in there because the, that was one of the conditions that the property owner requested. And I, I believe, I read to say, we'll do it if, if it's consistent with our policy on speed humps. So, we need to look at it and make sure that it's, the, the topography and so forth is such that a speed hump would work there.
Okay, I see. I mean, I guess at the end of the day, if we are, when the consent order is signed by a judge, a judge has ordered us to proceed in the fashion as laid out in the consent order. If at some future date, we determine as a city that speed humps are not feasible, I just want to make sure that we're not, in a sort of backdoor way, violating the consent order because we have now deemed unlawful or not feasible our speed humps in our city. You know what I mean? So, I'm just, I'm raising that for you to flag it. It may be a non-issue moving forward, but it, it just seems a little disjointed to me.
Okay.
Understood. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this? No? Okay, great. Who would like to move the resolution ratifying the execution of a consent order resolving litigation regarding the alley connecting Winding Hill Way and Flower Avenue?
Someone.
Councilmember Smith moved. Do I have second?
Second.
Councilmember Siemens. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, six to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now, we will move on to the presentation of the City Manager's proposed FY 2018 budget.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, before you start, can I just, the city clerk emailed me that the Jazz Fest is on June 11th. So, I just wanted to make that announcement, since Mr. Lovelace asked before, so now we'll move on to the...
And then, Councilmember Koreshi and I can go there and get an early birthday present.
Oh, that's right, same birthday.
Right, same birthday. I'd like to present the fiscal year 2018 proposed budget. And the cover graphic I just want to mention was prepared by Danielle Murphy, who's our new administrative assistant in the Recreation Department. She also does nice design work and is a, quite an accomplished photographer. So, we use people in many different ways, but I appreciated that this used the city flag, and it also identified the subjects that we've been discussing through council Tonight, I'll be going through, hopefully, a relatively quick presentation of the budget. We will be going into detail on these different subjects in the three-budget work sessions that begin a week from Monday. So, I'll go do a budget overview. I'll focus some on the capital budget, the operating budget, the council priorities, and then the budget schedule. And here are drawings of our proposed library expansion and renovation. This budget presents total revenue of all funds of $32.5 million, total general fund revenues of about $25 million. Total expenditures of all funds, $40.5 million. Total general fund expenditures, $32.8 million. When we go into the details, you'll find that these numbers are higher than kind of actuality, because they represent the money that we will be getting for bonding for these, for the library and the street projects, and that's subject that we'll go through. What I am proposing is that the real property tax rate propose to decrease slightly from the current 56.75 cents per $100 assessed valuation to just 56 cents per $100 assessed valuation. That means that we're, we would be receiving about $169,000 less than if we kept the same tax rate in FY 18. Each cent of the tax rate is about $225,000 in expected revenue, and that's something that, when you get down to the, the budget reconciliation, ends up being an important One of the things that you'll see when you go through the budget document, and it's, it's my favorite page, which talks about the unassigned general fund fund balance, and we have $3.1 million. So, this is just over the $3 million that we feel is the essential amount for the, needed to meet the normal fluctuations of revenues and expenditures. The most significant budget change in this document is taking on debt for some major capital projects. We plan to propose borrowing $7 million for library and related construction on a 30-year bond, planning to borrow $2 million for grant match to the Ethan Allen and Flower Avenue Green Street projects, and that would be over a 15-year period. For the next three years, debt service increases to about $900,000 per year. If you look in the budget, it says that this year's debt service is about $760,000, but that was presuming that we would have gone out to borrow for the street projects this year, and we've not doing that, we're moving that schedule a little bit. So, the actual proposed estimated amount is more in the $360,000 range. I want to talk, I think, the most important thing about perspective and looking at the budget is the economic context. And if we look just at Tacoma Park, the assessable base, which is the value of property for taxing purposes, it's increasing in Tacoma Park, but just at a moderate rate. Because people have been very nervous about increasing costs of housing, and some new housing has been expensive, there's many ways that there are kind of depreciations of that full taxing base. And so, the net assessable base increased only 6%. If you'll remember, when you are a homeowner and you've been in your home for more than a year, and the value of your property goes up more than 10%, your actual assessable base only, for taxing purposes, only goes up a maximum of 10%. For commercial properties, there's no cap like that. So, an increase of only 6% is modest, and so, and I don't see that changing a lot in coming years. I think it's going to remain in those kinds of areas of increase. That's less than I had thought a couple of years ago that it might be. Last year, it was about 8%, this year, it's 6%. Last year it was about 8%, this year it's 6%. I think that 6% to 8% is going to be for the next couple of years. The other thing is that income tax revenue has also been increasing, but also at a slow rate. And I think that we felt kind of good that income tax revenue has been increasing, but when we look at future years, given layoffs with, proposed by the federal government, cuts in consulting contracts, those kinds of things that really make a difference to Montgomery County's income tax revenue adds much concern about what the city might face for FY 19 and FY 20. One of the things that I remember very painfully is that in 2009 to 2011, when the recession and sequestration activity took place, the Montgomery County income tax was affected greatly. Montgomery County's budget is about, is funded by about 60% by income tax revenue, capital gains revenue. They cut the heck out of us when those, when their revenues went down. And so I see a potential for the city being cut, not only in getting less income tax revenue, but also getting cut by Montgomery County and the state of Maryland as we were before, when their, when their income tax revenue declines. We don't know what will happen with the federal budget, but this one seems like a fairly significant risk, and so it's something that I'm very concerned about. I am happy, though, that there is some economic development activity increasing. We still are working on having an economic push for New Hampshire Avenue, and that's part of what our plan will be dealing with. And we do have the concern about housing prices that were even raised in the citizen Our budget principles, same every year, pay ongoing costs with ongoing funds, maintaining infrastructure even when the budget is tight, and follow our laws and best practices. On the second item, the maintaining infrastructure even when the budget is tight, I, I think all you have to do is look in my neighborhood, right outside the city in Silver Spring, at the quality of the roads, which are horrible, because Montgomery County, when their budget was tight, they stopped repairing roads. One of the things that we did was we hunkered down and we kept on with our regular road renovation program, and it made an enormous amount of difference that we're not having to retrofit and catch up with emergency spending now. So I, I'm pleased that that is a responsible way that we've been, and I'd like to continue that. Part of the budget principles is that predictability is good, so kind of how much you're going to pay for taxes is important to know from year to year. We like to minimize large variations. And we also like to determine who's the appropriate entity to pay for something, and it doesn't need to be the city. If we can get someone else to pay for something appropriately, we try to do so, and we'd love to do more of that. So I want to go over our general fund revenues and our general fund expenditures. The general fund handles most of the expenses and activities for our budget. And this drawing, this chart, shows in blue the amount of revenue that we bring in, in taxes and utility fees. This is property tax, real property, personal property, income tax, utility fees. The kind of beige-ish color is intergovernmental revenue. Most of it is different rebate from the county. And then the line is our personnel expenses. We try to keep a pretty close tab on this so that we're paying ongoing costs with ongoing expenses, ongoing revenues. Last year, the council did lower the tax rate significantly, less than I had recommended, and you do kind of see that gap there. It's not completely closed with what I'm proposing in FY 18, but I do try to keep that narrowed, and it's something that I, I feel is important. When we look at this budget, it took a while for me to try to figure out even what message to say, because other than the, the major projects, it's a boring budget. Our operating costs are remarkably small in terms of increase. We have the borrowing and debt payments, that's important. And we have, not tax-related, but certainly in your role as the stormwater management board, is the proposed fee increase for stormwater management fund. We also get money from other sources through the special revenues fund and the speed camera In looking at the revenue that we've gotten from property tax, for the past few years, the actual revenue that we've brought in has increased about somewhere in the 3.8 to 4.5% a year, each year. But of course, the council sets the rate that establishes that. Intergovernmental revenue has remained flat. Of course, there's always some uncertainty, and we hope to make that better. It includes tax duplication, how, how we use the revenue, state police aid, and then our cable operating revenue. For income tax, the amount of income tax that the city gets is 17% of the income tax amount paid by residents to Montgomery County. It varies more than other tax revenue because income varies and capital gains can vary. Over the last few years, it's hovered around $3 million. I'm estimating about $3.4 million for FY 18. This year it's about in the 3.3 million, 150,000 range. I put adjusted here because if you'll remember, two years ago, we got a large increase from the back payment of income tax revenue that the comptroller's office had given to others, and we got paid back. So I've got a whole separate chart of what we should have gotten in what year, so I can see how the trends go on that. Property tax, intergovernmental revenue, and income tax together comprise 90% of our general fund revenue. Real property tax represents 50% of our revenue. The intergovernmental payments are more than a quarter of our revenue, and income tax is about 14%. So this is where our revenue comes from for most of the activities that we do. When we looked at the expenditures for FY 18, one thing that's very nice is that personnel costs are not that high, because we have completed our three-year phase-in catch-up on personnel costs to get to the market medium for the, for the various positions. We also are, have more reasonable workers' compensation costs because we put attention to trying to get our risks down. With costs of supplies and services, it's almost flat. The major expenditures, as always is the case, are capital costs. We have standard expenditures proposed for roads and sidewalks. We will begin working on sidewalk improvements along state highways. We have our equipment replacement reserve, our facility maintenance reserve, our housing reserve, our stormwater fund with its fee, and we have some special large projects. So let me go through some of the details. The salary increases return to a standard rate of increase, and we are still in union negotiations right now, but the increases should be in normal range for the region, and we should have an agreement that covers three-year period. For workers' compensation, for those who get into the weeds about workers' compensation, our mod rate dropped from 1.61 to 1.27. Last year it gone up a lot. We paid about $200,000 more in workers' compensation payments than the previous year, and that was alarming to us, but we have worked to get that down. And although our actual costs may stay about the same as this year because of the various increases in other personnel costs, and we haven't gotten our actual invoice for it yet to see the details, we feel that we're on the right track on workers' compensation costs. Our number of employees stays about the same. It actually increases by .3 FTEs, full-time equivalent employees. This is primarily because of change in part-time hours. Crossing guards hours have expanded a little bit because of the school change, and we have a contracted cleaning service that we're swapping out for just regular staff so we can save money on that side, too. So it increases their hours a little bit, but we actually end up with a net loss in cost with that. We go through a fairly rigorous process when the department heads are considering what budgets to propose for their units, and we, where we, we've cut a position and we've added a position so that the net increase is almost flat, just the .3 increase. In terms of costs of supplies and services, our change in, in the costs of our supplies and services is only $35,000 on a base of $6.3 million. So it's about a half a percent increase on supplies and services. The overall operating costs, including personnel, increases only about 2.3%. It's a very modest increase. I feel very proud that staff looked at various ways to try to cut things that made sense to cut, find better ways of doing things. And some of the, some of the stories that they've done on, on that, we'll, we'll get into during the budget work sessions, really pleased to see the way that, that they've gone about that. I think the other thing that's been particularly useful in, in thinking about how to be efficient is really focusing on the council priorities. And so one of the things that I, I just want to reinforce is how important those council priorities are to how we think about what we do on a day-to-day basis. And where you'll see this most clearly is in a new division in the recreation department on outreach to really focus on youth services. The big numbers are in capital costs, and so infrastructure, street and sidewalk expenditures take up a large proportion of money. Generally, we've done a thing where we do $500,000 in new sidewalks, $500,000 in ADA sidewalk improvements, and $500,000 in road, street repair. We've got, we've kept that more or less with some, a little bit of modification because some of our big projects. So we still have $500,000 of new sidewalks as part of our budget. We also have additional money from the Safe Routes to School programs for the sidewalk on Lincoln Avenue. We'll also be using some of the funds from the grant and city funds for sidewalks on Flower Avenue, Green Street, and Ethan Allen Gateway. For ADA sidewalk work, we've allocated $300,000 for sidewalks along city streets. I think most of that's going to be in Ward 1, and $200,000 for sidewalks along state highways. This is the first time that we've started to put that in as part of our schedule to do. For street repaving, we're allocating $300,000 as opposed to the $500,000, but we are doing significant street work on Flower Avenue and Ethan Allen Gateway. We also have some other infrastructure, kind of street sidewalk improvements in front of neighborhood commercial centers. We have some public art. We have some funds for the Tacoma Junction traffic study, things that might not be incorporated as part of the development project, but we might decide we want to add on some additional funds for. And then we always have $20,000 for street light upgrades. These are separate from the LED street light upgrade process. So if there needs to be a new light put in someplace or something, we have some funds for that. For the equipment replacement reserve, we have, are putting in an $800,000 contribution. We're only spending about $380,000 this year. We have over a million next year, and so there may be some, a little bit less that we can put in as a contribution to the ERR. But the thing that's important with the equipment replacement reserve is that this is how we are able to afford the, the really strange big bumps in equipment when we need a new dump truck that costs a lot of money or something, that we're able to fund that from year to year on a fairly standard basis. We'll be putting in $300,000 to our facilities maintenance reserve, which we need for the kind of things that come up that are big-ticket items, but are maintenance. So there's going to be a time, for example, when the seating in the, in this auditorium wears out or something, you need to have funds for those kinds of expenses. And we're proposing to put in an additional $300,000 contribution to the housing reserve. So we put in $400,000 in FY 17. We're expecting to spend in the $50,000 range this year. We are looking forward to seeing the recommendations of the housing strategic plan to determine some ways to, to best use these funds. When you look at the, the front of the budget book with some of the charts, you'll notice bond reserve of $3.5 million. What this is, is a way to make sure that the $9 million that we might get in bonding for the major projects, that we don't just spend it on other stuff. This is a way to say, we know that this is something that we'll need to spend after, after, say, FY 19 and 20, to make sure that we have those funds there for the completion of these various projects. So it's, it's recognizing that it's there, but that we're not touching it because it's for those specific projects. For the stormwater fund and fee, we need to raise the base fee from $55 to $92, as the public works director has presented the information to the city council a couple of weeks ago. One of the aspects of that is a survey of impervious surface, surfaces across the city, which might give some information about a different way of either incentivizing some actions or making sure that those who have the most, most impervious surface pay the most for the system. One of the things that's important about the stormwater fund is that it does not use taxpayer money. This is money from property owners, nonprofits, as well as taxpaying property owners to pay their fair share of the stormwater system. And the three special large projects that we're facing in this, in the next year or so are the Ethan Allen Gateway, Flower Avenue Green Street, and the library renovation projects. I'll go briefly over the stormwater fund proposed increase. Right now, the, the management fee, base fee has been $55 per year since, I think, 2012. It's calculated on the percentage of impermeable surface area. We get from that about $414,000 annually. Each dollar of the fee generates about $7,600. Often, we get grant funds that help us pay for some of the projects. We feel that those grant funds are going to be harder and harder to get in the next couple of years. Expenditures have been running higher than our revenues for some time. By the end of this year, only $87,000 is left in that fund, which doesn't get us even one project done. So for FY 18, we need to raise the fee to $92 to cover the annual costs. And to kind of cap, recap what Ms. Braithwaite went through before the council the other night, we have new permit requirements, and that has some annual cost impacts, have annual water quality testing of Outfalls, which is a new expense of about $15,000 a year. And then we have increases of $20,000 to the amount we do for video inspection, $110,000 annually for capital projects that are needed to be done, and $15,000 more annually for system maintenance. Projects in FY 18 include some bio-retention at Devonshire and Glazewood, Grant and Holly. There's a pipe project at Tulip Avenue Phase 2, and there's the Tacoma Branch Stream Restoration Project. Other expenditures that are needed in FY 18 are this evaluation of impervious area properties, which is a one-time cost of about $30,000, and a purchase of a truck scale, which is about $10,000. One of the things we're very happy to have is special revenue funds. We routinely do pursue grants for major projects. We've been most successful on transportation grants and on environmental ones. As the discussions happen at the federal level, environmental grants may come, become more difficult to get. However, just even for FY 18, the amount of money from other sources for the Flower Avenue Green Street project is $3 million. In general, out of, I think it's about 6.9 million for the entire project, the city would be putting in about 1.2 million. So we're leveraging that about five times. And, and it's really, it is, as the mayor mentioned, a model project across the state. The Ethan Allen Gateway project, we're getting about 1.3 million from other sources, putting in about a million. Other kinds of special revenues that we get, some of the projects... Other kinds of special revenues that we get, some of the projects, we have a trail behind MHP property at a cost of about $50,000 from community legacy funds. The Safe Routes to School program has programming, as well as the sidewalk on Lincoln Avenue, which is about, together, $644,000. Sligo Mill Overlook Park, $125,000 for FY '18. We're so happy that that's moving. I will get the schedule for you as soon as I can. We get money for the TKPK 5K, which is coming up, of $40,000. We get CDBG funds. It's a small amount, but there's food distribution through EduCare, and then there's the money for the recreation assistance to persons with developmental disabilities through the Village of Tacoma Park. We get Smart Energy Communities grant of $44,000, and we get our cable equipment grants through the franchise fees of the various cable companies. Our last fund is a speed camera fund. Those revenues have stabilized at about $1.3 million, so while I was worried they were going to just go down, not that I'm worried about it, but obviously, the point is to have safer speeds in our community. But we are getting about $1.3 million a year. The fund pays for two police officers and a photo enforcement analyst, as well as the cost of the program. In the past, we used to get a lot of excess revenue, build sidewalks. We don't have very much excess revenue, so we're going to use some for some just facility improvements for the police department and for radios and mobile computers. We are in the process of going out to bid for a new vendor payment process. We're kind of coordinating at this moment with Montgomery County, which is just about to go out to bid on theirs. So it may be that we want to do a joint bidding, and that may be most useful for us. But we do have the documents ready to go if that seems to slow down. So to our capital budget, we have the Ethan Allen Gateway Streetscape Project. We had hoped that it would be going out to bid in FY '17, but it's going out to bid in early FY '18. I want to talk just a moment about Ethan Allen Gateway and Flower Avenue, Green Street, and the complexity that they have. Because these involve multiple agencies, TAP money, which is federal transportation money, with Flower Avenue, it involves utility companies that are also pooled in to do the projects all at the same time. The bid sets for these are complex, and they get reviewed in detail at intervals that are more often than are common by the state highway. And so it has slowed down the bid package review process on these. Nevertheless, they're really close to being ready to go out to bid. So the work has been agreed to by the various agencies, and it's just the details on the bid packages that are being worked on primarily right now. The library renovation and expansion, we'll get some information on how that's going, I think, next week, and it will be going to bid during FY '18. We do want to work on filling in the atrium floor over the police department. It'll be in design stage. We've kind of put that off as we were taking some extra time on some of the other design projects, simply staff resources were a little tough to spread around on that, although it's an affordable project that we'd like to do to move along. And our major purchases are on regular schedules through the equipment replacement reserve. When you look in the budget book, we have close to the back CIP grid pages. And one of the things that is easier this year to read these tables than it's been in the past, I have to give a shout-out to Alyssa Trammell in our Finance Department, who's doing a lot of the budget document preparation work for us. She's grouped lines that are related together so that you can see the multiple funding sources for Flower Avenue and see how it all hooks together in a much easier way, for example. But in that grid, there's little codes that'll say ERR if it's funded by the Equipment Replacement Reserve, or Facility Maintenance Reserve, or Speed Camera Fund, or whatever. And you can look and see which funding source the various projects and costs come from. And I had to put a couple pictures of the dog park in because I was so happy we got the dog park. We've got a segment here of the Flower Avenue, Green Street project. And still no alpacas in lawns. I know, they're going to show up. Somebody's going to get some. I know they're going to rent some and bring them in. So our funding sources for the capital budget, besides the general fund, are special revenue funds, the speed camera fund, and the stormwater fund. For kind of bonding is a big issue. One of the things that's important about borrowing money is it smoothes the impact on the general fund and on the taxpayers, and it also has the people who are using these facilities over a long period of time continuing to pay for them when they're using them. So in FY '18, $1 million will be needed for the city's contribution to the Ethan Allen Project. We're calling the $2 million bond the Transportation Bond. In FY '18, $709,000 will be needed for Flower Avenue. And then in FY '19, we'll need another $520,000. This also is part of the transportation bond. And then some of it will come from our street fund. This $2 million transportation bond would be a 15-year term to pay, and the $7 million has a 30-year term to pay. I've got the various schedules for, you know, what the annual costs are for these and the interest payments, and I'm happy to share all them with you. One of the things I looked at on the $2 million transportation bond is that, once you take it out past 15 years, it doesn't make sense. It's too small of an overall amount to make it make sense to keep stretching it out. So I think when you look at the various schedules, you'll see that it doesn't make sense to try to do a 30-year bond for the $2 million borrowing. One of the things that's important here is that we're well within our various limits for bonding. And we'll go through, when we get to that subject on the work session night, all the different provisions for bonding and how we meet them. On our operating budget, I just like these pictures. It shows some of the things we work with. I particularly like the picture of New Hampshire Avenue with every kind of transportation represented. And hopefully, we'll have it in a nicer way when the state does its work. As I started talking this evening, most of the operating budget is unremarkable. And where we have discretionary funds, they're targeted to initiatives to advance council priorities, and a very small increase in full-time equivalent staff. We are continuing our effort to have money out to the community in grant and partnership funds. We've got $125,000 for the community grant program, $17,500 for the Independence Day Committee, $20,000 for the Folk Festival. It's higher than usual because they'll be doing a special Folk Festival this year. $35,000 for Old Tacoma Business Association, and also for the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. We have some money for community development, block grant-funded programming. And one of the things that is a little bit confusing because we changed things at the last moment in the document, we do have $25,000 in the legislative section, which represents the City Council, for kind of things that you think are important. It's just listed as consultant contracts, but it could be something else of that. We meant to move out, but it's still in there, $5,000 for the Montgomery County Scholarship Program. And then I'll address this a little bit later as well, but there also then is $20,000 for some other things that might help advance council priorities. And when we go through the council priorities, we have the various, I see, I left out one of our council priorities on environmental, but it's still there, and the emphasis on racial equity for this year. For the livable community for all, we're proceeding with the plans to renovate and expand the library, do park projects, contribute to the housing reserve. One of the things that was referenced by the mayor in response to some of the citizens this evening is our property tax assistance for lower-income homeowners. That continues to be a significant amount of money. We have $100,000 for contracting with community partners to advance council priorities. We have the improvements for Ethan Allen Gateway and Flower Avenue, Green Street, and we have major community events and arts programming. I'm going to speak just a moment about the property tax assistance for lower-income homeowners in that, when we talk about what the tax rate should be, we have quite a few families that live, that have moved into the city that have a good income, have really fairly substantive incomes. And it would be nice if they really helped contribute to the kinds of activities and services that we think are important for the whole community. By assessing them at a certain rate, it allows us to have funds to do property tax assistance for others who may have difficulty paying property tax, or for getting some of these services that come out of what we're hoping out of the housing reserve and a variety of the other kinds of community service partnership programs that we have underway. And so, you know, there's kind of two different ways to look at this. This is you can just have a low rate for everybody and then not have any money to spend for those who need extra, or you can have a little bit higher rate for everybody and then have ways to help balance out and actually get some of the equity that may be the right way, might be the right approach as opposed to just the equality of the assessments. For fiscally sustainable government, obviously, this is something really close to my heart and our finance director's heart. There's a couple major activities that we are focusing on this year. One is a review of financial policies to both maintain the highest level of fiscal responsibility, but also to align where possible investments that advance community values. And that's something that we have pledged to look at, and there can be some funds that can help do that. Little change in real property tax rate and the preservation of reserves to protect the city from possible future decline in revenues. I think this is really important. Our lobbying and communication efforts on tax duplication, which I'm heavily involved with. And we have been contributing an additional $100,000 a year in addition to the actuarially recommended amount for the Police Employees Retirement Plan, and we'd like to continue Environmentally sustainable government, raise the base stormwater management fee from $55 to $92 to help us do our part in protecting the Chesapeake Bay, especially at a time when the federal government may not be doing that. Continued education and incentive programs for the Green Home Certification Competition and for Sustainable Energy Action Plan, and continued efforts towards increasing the tree canopy. For our engaged, responsive, service-oriented government, our community survey will help gather information to improve and target our programs and services. It will help identify ways to improve police-community relations. And most importantly, an important item that we've been discussing most recently is that will help provide base information for the council's racial equity efforts. For advancing economic development efforts, I urge you to look through the Housing and Community Development section. There's a number of things that they have planned, but essentially, begin implementing the Economic Development Strategic Plan, and there is a new temporary position, full-time, to assist with the economic development efforts. When we look at racial equity, I tried to take some time thinking about what's in the budget and how does looking through the racial equity lens apply. And I put that in the cover sheet for this item tonight. The renovation and expansion of Tacoma Park Library is a really important element of this because the kinds of things that, the role that the Tacoma Park Library plays for residents, particularly residents of color, is remarkable. And we have programming that's on top of each other in the building. We don't have a separate place for young adults to be able to gather and read and get their books. And these folks are, more often than not, people of color. Ward 4 residents, 85.1% people of color per the most recent census. The new outreach division of recreation, it doesn't have a lot of money devoted to it, but it does have this focus on services for young people, and the Recreation Department's already started doing this with the way that it's divided up its staff. The Flower Avenue, Green Street does a great deal for the residents of Ward 5 and others. Ward 5 has 72.4% people of color as of 2010. Ethan Allen Gateway has improvements for many different wards as well, but Ward 6 is 81.5% people of color. Try to think about these things, and I think, once we do have more information and we see how these things go, we'll get some better statistics, better ways of categorizing it, better ways of identifying how we promote and tell the story. In the legislative budget, the $25,000 that I mentioned, $5,000 for Montgomery College scholarships, and some of the things that the remaining $20,000 could be dealt with is it could help if there's something else that's needed for the Aquatic Center feasibility study. We're certainly hoping Montgomery County does that and takes the lead on that. There's other kinds of workshops. The Seed Workshop is one that's been mentioned. There's ways to help, you know, there may be some things that we look at in terms of even how our financial planning might help people of color. So I think there's things that we could look at through this. I don't have a full list, but we have some funds there set aside for that. And as I started out with, tax rate, proposed tax rate that I'm proposing is 56 cents per $100 valuation, but the constant yield rate would be 53.58 cents per $100 valuation. Each cent equals about $224,000, $225,000. One of the things that I think is important here is, and it's very confusing when you start looking at the numbers about what our assessable base is worth, is that the state changes the numbers about every six months. So even how, you know, there's not an apples-to-apples comparison between what they're saying for FY '18 versus FY '17 versus FY '16. In general, one way to look at this is that to take the tax rate down to the constant yield rate, we would need to cut about $760,000 out of the budget. And so that to $800,000, somewhere in there, depending on which number you're looking at as the assessable base, is the range that we're thinking about. We have a budget schedule. Today's my presentation. Tomorrow's the Budget Open House, which we're really looking forward to. I've seen some emails that show people have interest and questions about a number of the big projects. But one of the things, to Councilmember Mail's point, is it's really hard to read the budget. It's really hard to think about the budget. It's hard to know what questions to ask or what points to make. And so one of the advantages of the open house is it's a place where residents can come and say, "Well, I don't really understand about this. I think you don't need this." And maybe we can argue and say, "Well, actually, that's paid for out of, it comes, we don't even pay for it out of the tax rate," you know? But if you're looking at something maybe over here, this has some other kinds of things. And it might be that back and forth may be helpful in giving people ideas about what kind of comments to make at your public hearings. Or it may be something that makes us as staff think, and we go back and do some more research. Really looking forward to that give and take. And for those who can't come to the open house, we can send you emails to me, and we'll still share them and do some research.
Just a little, can I ask a quick question about that?
Absolutely.
Can you just give us a general idea of what the framework for the evening will be? I know there'll be other department heads there, but is it just going to be?
We're going to be at tables, and you walk up and, "Why are you spending so much money on Flower Avenue?" Whatever it is. And, you know, we'll have information on the council priorities there. We'll have... We'll have, it's the first time, so maybe we'll see, you know, what works and what doesn't work. We're all, all my department heads are asking, "Well, what should I prepare for?" I don't know. Come with, come with the knowledge that you have as subject area experts.
And just another thing worth mentioning is it's a drop-in, drop-out thing.
Right.
Anytime between the hours of seven and nine.
And the only reason I ask is some people ask me, "Is there going to be a specific time, because they can't be there until later, where there's going to be a presentation?"
No present-
I didn't think so.
I'm not planning any presentations.
Okay, thanks.
The official, two official public hearings are on Wednesday, April 12th, and on Wednesday, April 26th. The 26th one is advertised not only on the proposed budget, but on the constant yield tax rate. One of the things that I want to urge, although people can speak at any time and they can speak when it, at the, you know, kind of first and second reading of the budget ordinances, if you come out to testify at the first or second reading of the budget ordinances, you've missed the boat. And the time to get your ideas out, it's always helpful to hear from you, but if you want something different in the budget, we need to know earlier. It's very helpful to hear at one of the public hearings or even at whatever time you want to talk. Yes, sir.
Is there a public comment at the Monday work session?
No, there's not. Those are just work sessions, yeah. So we do have three budget work sessions. We've divided them as we did last year. The one on April 17th is on the capital budget, which is the big topic. On April 24th, it's looking at the programs that advance council priorities that aren't in the capital budget. And then on Monday, May 1st, it's kind of the, whatever's left over about the departments and the non-departmental budgets. But the real discussion that night will be your first real strong discussion about budget reconciliation. As we go through this, as you've done in the past, if there's people have budget reconciliation items, Mayor, I'm assuming you want them to know them as soon as possible. And so, especially if any research is needed for them, we will be wanting to get that to you and make sure that it's out and available soon. We did get some information for Councilmember Siemens on the police items. They just went out today. It's an enormous amount of information. We have other items to come out yet on the police issues. If there's other issues or other topics, please let us know so we can do the, do the research for you.
I didn't see my question about recruitment. Is that still one that?
It's, I'm sorry, it should be in there, yeah. It's not, I don't think, I'm not sure if it's in the package that was sent today. I'll go back and look, but we certainly will address it.
And will City TV film the open house to those people there?
No, I don't think so, because it's really not a, you know, there wouldn't be any particular-
See people walking around.
Yeah. It's just kind of a miller-round thing.
All right.
All right, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. I just wanted to make sure that I understood and that residents understand that the tax rate that you're proposing is actually an increase in the amount of tax revenue-
That's correct.
-that we would be getting and actually an increase in the amount of money that people would have to pay in their taxes.
That's largely true. It's always an individual, case-by-case basis, but yes, it's presuming that people's property value has increased, so the tax rate times that would be more than they've paid this year.
So if, if we were to use the constant yield tax rate, that would tend to keep taxes the same as they are today.
It would on an average basis, yes.
On an average basis. But it would still mean that many property owners would have to pay more because of the stormwater increase.
That's right. And so, it would go up from $55 to $92 for single-family properties.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Schultz.
You know, one big question I have is trying to understand better the assessable tax base. And very early in the slide presentation, we talked about a average increase of the assessable base. What I'm curious to know, have we the ability to segregate commercial properties from non-commercial properties to see if there is a differential between the growth in the tax base associated with commercial properties as opposed, as distinguished from residential properties?
Yes, in two ways. Usually, we can have SDAT run, run things so that it identifies which is commercially, the commercial tax assessable base versus residential. And I think we did have that. I haven't looked at those numbers. The biggest difference is that residential properties that are owned or occupied have this cap in how much they can increase, but commercial properties do not. So they, so there's always a differential. Unless the property values have been flat for some time, there's, the commercial properties' assessable base increases more than that of residential properties.
Well, I asked that question for a reason, and that is, is that, I think something that would be helpful, maybe not in the context of this budget document, is to help residents understand that to the extent that we can accelerate the commercial tax base and by using economic development tools and programs, our own or others' programs, then to that extent, we are increasing the tax base.
That's right.
And to that extent, we've increased the tax base, then there's less pressure on every property in terms of the tax rate.
That's right.
So for, for example, we've got the Tacoma Junction Development, which has been a property that we've owned, for which we've collected no taxes on.
Right.
Now, it's going to be generating at some point property taxes-
Right.
-that we will garner, and that will be based on the Maryland State Taxers, Assessors' evaluation of what that property is worth-
That's right.
-which will of course be in the millions and millions of dollars when it's all done.
Right.
And that's a perfect example of sort of saying, "Gosh, in effect, what we're saying, we have a new source of revenue that we didn't have before, just on that one property." And if you multiply that out by lots of properties, say on New Hampshire Avenue, that, I think that's a way of helping our residents understand something that I think is an enigma for most people.
Well, and you're exactly right on that. I think it is why we've pushed so hard for the Purple Line all these years. It's why we pushed for the budget language on the study of New Hampshire Avenue, which, off the top of my head, it's about $28 million more in tax revenue from New Hampshire Avenue increases alone, if that's, if that's improved. Anytime the commercial base increases, one of the things that can happen, and just to give people the heads up, is it can increase the property values of residential properties near it because it's a nicer area. But the overall pressure, as you said, on the, on needing to get all that tax money changes, and the burden goes to the commercial properties, and the amount that we have to actual, actually get from residential properties is less.
Yes.
And we want that. The other thing that we, we get from commercial properties is the, you know, economic livelihood of people working in them and buying things, and there's some, some of the personal property taxes, but there's also income taxes and other things that help our community when we have a lively economic base.
Yes, indeed.
All right. Councilmember Kovar.
Yeah, thank you. Couple of questions, maybe you can just clarify. I'm trying to understand. So, in looking through the material, the book with the detailed budget, not just what you were presenting, in a few cases, and I'm looking at, just as an example, on the, as well as page 28, it's a department summary for general government, and it says, and I'm not going to go into great detail now, but it says, "The department expenditures are expected to be $181,000 less than the budget in '17." In other words, we saved some money because it looks like certain positions weren't filled for part of the time. And there are other examples, as you go through, where we spent less this year. So what happens with that money and how does it fit into '18?
Right. And that question was actually raised a little bit as one of the citizens. Unless the money is in one of the reserves, the equipment replacement reserve, the facilities maintenance reserve, or the housing reserve, if it's not in, if it's not in those reserves, everything goes to zero on July 1. So whatever's appropriated on July 1 starts to take effect. So the money that's not spent ends up being money that we can reappropriate in the, in the next fiscal year.
But so, you're, but you start from square zero, in effect, on July 1. It's not as if that money that wasn't spent, other than in the reserves, sort of counts toward, or is additionally, is it additionally available in FY '18?
It's not additionally, no, we, we respend it. I mean, so that's one of the things, you know, if we, if something is less, we use, when we're projecting for the next year, you know, we look at what we're estimating to spend this year. And if there's extra funds, then we have those funds as part of the base going forward. So it's not like we get, that money sits and adds to something. It, it is money that we use as part of the FY '18 proposals.
Right. But is it fair to say if we knew all those amounts that we would have fallen short by, in theory, we could have appropriated less money?
Yes, if we, if we know.
Right.
And the question is if we know. Where, where the, the big issue comes from has to do with construction. Because major construction happens during the summer, and the fiscal year changes on July 1. And so, if you haven't completed your project by June 30, then, and it's going another three weeks, you know, it's a big amount, it can be a big amount of money that, you know, that switches over. So it's a, we try to do the best we can at estimating when we'll spend them. When we have a model that works, we try to follow it, but some things don't work that way.
Okay. And then you mentioned this reserve, was it 3.5 million, a bond reserve?
Yes.
So can you explain how that works?
Well, the situation, and I, my finance director would do a better job, but when you look at the budget, you'll see adding $9 million to our revenue because we'd be taking out $9 million in bond funds. We're not going to spend it all in FY '18. We're not going to spend the full $9 million. So we need to make sure that, for the construction projects for which that's for, so we need to make sure that we don't touch a certain amount of it until it's time to spend it.
So that's parked until it's ready to spend?
It's parked until it's, until it's able, until we're able to spend it for those particular projects.
So that's just some portion of whatever that, you kind of get all the bonded money that you get right away?
Right.
And you don't get it in sections, and then you just have to-
Right. And you can't use it for other purposes.
Right.
So, you know, if we wanted to, like, hire somebody to do something, we can't use it for that.
Okay. And one last thing, and I agree with, with Councilmember Schultz about the value of the development along New Hampshire Avenue and how that flows. I guess the one point I just want to make, though, is that with all that growth, you probably also have increased costs of various kinds. So if, if you built, you know, five new apartment buildings and you had 1,000 people, you probably need to start picking up more garbage and hiring more police and doing things like that. So it's not like that's free money. It's just a point I want to make.
No, and, and actually, that's a very good point. One of the things that we have to look at when we go through that process is really looking at, you know, what does that mean? Because adding another, you know, 100 units to pick trash up from may not even mean adding any staff.
Right.
But once you get to 150 or 200, then you might. So, you know, for different things, it has different trigger points, then we have to look at it.
Thanks. And there was one last thing. Back when we looked at the library a while ago, you talked about these four criteria in the charter for our borrowing, and I just wanted to ask you about that. So, and it says that, one of them is that there should be a public hearing when the amount is more than 5% of that year's revenue, that we should strive to maintain average maturity below 20 years. I assume that means since it's an average, some can be over 20, and some would not be, that we maintain net tax-supported debt at a level not to exceed 1% of the assessed valuation of the city's property-
Which is about $20 million, which is-
Right. And strive to maintain annual tax-supported debt service costs at less than 15% of the combined expenditures of the general and special reserve funds. Are we within all of those?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Councilmember Mail.
Yeah, thank you. And I just wanted to compliment you on the presentation tonight. I know how hard it is to go through 40 slides and know what you want to say on each slide and do it without notes. So I really appreciate how well you did that. I'm going to sort of break my comments into two parts. One are more sort of process-related questions, broader policy issues, and then the other is just sort of more detailed, focused questions. One of the things I've, I guess it's been sort of nagging at me over the years is that there's often some broader policy conversations that come up in the budget process. And I wanted to just make the suggestion for your consideration and my colleagues' consideration that associated with the budget process, we also either pass a separate resolution or in the resolution have a policy section. And so, I was trying to think of some examples. So for example, one of them is that the charter says specifically that the council may establish additional reserve funds, but that we must do so by ordinance. All right, so that's an example of we choose to create the facilities maintenance reserve. And I don't know if we did that by ordinance technically last year, I think was when we created it.
It was some time ago, yeah.
So whenever that, that facilities reserve is created, was that done by ordinance? When we do those things, that's sort of more of a policy call, and I think there might be value in having sort of a, at least a conversation about what, what policy decisions have we made in the context of this budget?
I agree, absolutely.
At least from my perspective, I find myself, every time I do a budget, getting into the weeds, learning a lot, figuring out a bunch of things that I'm like, "Oh, yeah, I remember that now." And then a year later, it's all gone. And including when we have the budget work sessions in the winter. And so, I've forgotten the things that I learned through hard labor and your hard labor at this point of the year, when I get to Christmas and the beginning of the budget process again. And so, for me, a policy resolution, or again, specific clauses would help deal with that issue. The second is a budget reserve policy. So that's something, I'm fairly certain that the council has voted, at least a hand vote, twice-
Yes.
-over two budget years to get a reserve policy.
Right.
And that's not on our agenda, on our rolling agenda-
No, but it should be, and we certainly, yes.
Could, could you provide a date on which we're going to talk about that reserve policy?
Yes, I can.
Okay. And that would be another example of a policy issue that comes up during the budget process.
Right.
The third issue, and I just, again, because I was trying to think of examples of policy, in our charter, there's a number of things that are relevant to the budget, although surprisingly few, and in our city code. So for example, in our city code, it says that there's a property tax credit that's given for tax duplication. I'd never heard about that before, but, but there's a specific section that says-
Says that.
-shall. So that could be something we should eliminate because we don't provide it, or at least we should discuss in the context of this. Another one that I think is more relevant is that, you know, I've expressed concerns over the years about the ERR, and, and that the balance in the ERR should eventually stop growing, or should stop growing at greater than inflation.
Right.
And I appreciate the city staff and the city manager's efforts because it's significantly slowed down. But one of the things that's established in the charter is that the only items that are added to the ERR are those with a purchase price greater than or equal 2.5% of budget reserves. So I think that's about, I'm sorry, budget revenue, total budget revenue. So I think that's about $120,000. So any item that's less than $120,000 shouldn't be in the ERR. So I'd like you to think about that, the language in the charter, and what we do about the fact that we have a lot of items that are not below that level. From my perspective, from a policy consideration, I would like the council to have to approve every new item that's added to the ERR. Because once you put it in, then it becomes a long-term cost that keeps coming.
Right.
And it becomes very easy for us just to say, at least I'll speak for myself, I say, "Oh, well, it's in the budget, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this." And it just becomes routine to spend money on those things.
If I, if I might, I-
Yeah, go ahead.
Each time we do have something that we add in to the ERR, we, we actually do bring it up because, for example, when we had a new car for the new, for a new position, we make a note that this would be then added into the ERR. But I do appreciate- But I do appreciate the comment about having it in one place and having a standard process.
There might be, maybe there's a way to organize that in the, in the resolution or the ordinance process, that this is a new addition to the ERR.
Right.
So it has, basically has a long-term budget implication. On the stormwater fund, I don't currently support the proposal that we heard about in detail from the Public Works Director a couple of weeks ago and that you summarized tonight. But the issue that most concerns me is that, again, I alluded to this a couple of weeks ago. At one point, we were told we were ahead of schedule. And the Public Works Director's comment last two weeks ago was, we got less credit for some of the things than we thought. So we went from being ahead of schedule to, I think, we're at 30% of where we're supposed to be. And that's a really big shift. We're spending a lot of money on it and we're not getting the credit from, I think, the state.
Right.
That we deserve. So before I put money into something like this, I want to know that things we think we're going to get credit for, we're going to get credit for. And so for me, there's a lot more proof that I need to see in that, in that process to have confidence that we should increase the money. And I also think sort of chicken and egg, I think we should be coming up with a policy that makes sure we get the balance between single-family properties and bigger properties, more equitable distributed than it is now, and look at basically the way that that fee is assessed and redesign that system before we put a big increase in place. I was finally supporting the increase to $55 a couple of years ago, and I could potentially support a sort of smaller incremental change for next year. But I think that's another, I think we're a step away from that. And the last comment on process, I appreciate your work associated with, we've sort of gone Goldilocks and the Three Bears on the departmental proposals, where sometimes we've had, some years, we've had really, really long presentations from department heads that are basically reciting what's in the document. Other years, we've had sort of five minutes of, you know, sort of pretty superficial overview, and then we jump in at questions. And then in other cases, I think we've gotten a good balance of, you know, what is in the, in the department head's head? What is the stuff that is not necessarily narratively captured, just as you've just done very well on this budget? And so I just wanted to say that I've noticed the city's work overall, your work overall in terms of those presentations. And so from my perspective and looking ahead in this process, you know, what I really like from the department heads is, you know, when they're trying to capture something that isn't, some is in the document itself, but some is the sort of broader narrative of what they're trying to achieve with programming, that sort of illustrates their leadership and their vision for where the department's going, where the city and the council's priorities are going, and interact, how those interact with the budget. So I just wanted to sort of comment on that overall. I just have a, I have a lot of questions, I'll put some of them in writing, but I'm just going to put some of them to you now. In 2017, we, the difference between the budgeted and the expected property tax was, we expect now to get $320,000 more than we budgeted. Why is that? What is, how does that come about?
That's part of the SDAT coming back with a different assessable base number.
That's your comment about they sort of adjust it every few months?
Right.
Okay, great. Could you provide, so a number of years ago, many of my colleagues know this, the speed camera fund was almost exclusively used for things like sidewalks.
Right.
Capital projects. And city manager at the time, Barb Matthews, talked about how state legislation might take away speed cameras, this is, we don't want to put personnel on this. But now we're basically at 100% of the money we spend that's not on the fee for Xerox. Most of the money goes to police personnel. And if you could provide the sort of history of that change, so 2013, 2014 to present, and the money that's gone into staffing over that time, associated with that, I'd also like to have the budget number that is the, sort of the full cost accounting of the budget for the police department that includes those, those numbers. So we see, I think, if I'm understanding the budget correctly, we see the general fund support for the police department and that number. But from 2013 to present, we haven't seen the adding the 200,000 or 300,000 from it.
Right. What I do try to do, and we also have that with Public Works and the stormwater amount too, stormwater budget. When I'm presenting information about the police department, I'll put them together and I'll identify that there's three people that are paid for out of the speed camera fund, but they are part of the police department.
But the specific thing I would like to see is just sort of 2013 to present, the numbers for police department, general fund budget plus the speed camera. And if you want to do the stormwater and public works, that'd be fine too.
Okay.
Just, I'll ask this, maybe you can just follow up on this afterwards. The income tax revenue dropped from '16 to '17 and then it's back up again?
Yeah.
But I thought '16 was a good year, so I was just curious why that...
It was the $400,000 that came from the SDAT, from the controller's office. And, and so that's, I did mention briefly, I have like, I have my own cheat sheet, which would show if they hadn't messed up, what we would have gotten for each year, so that it's more of a standard look.
Okay. I wanted to thank you and the city staff, Public Works Director, for putting money in for ADA work on state highway sidewalks. That's a critical investment, or most important, most used sidewalks in most cases, so thank The issue of the bond for the library, that it appears that the interest cost for borrowing over 30 years, that has a significant add to the overall cost of the bond instead of where we'd say borrow for 20 years. And so the numbers that you've provided are a 30-year borrow and the difference between the principal and the, and the interest. Could you get us approximate numbers on what a 20-year would look like in terms of...
Yeah, I have the chart for that.
Okay. It'd just be helpful to see them side by side. And then, did you build the, Carroll Bridge is currently not slated to reopen until spring 2018, I think? Something like that.
I hadn't heard that.
I thought that was this year.
No, no, I know that we all think now it's going to open this year, but on the SHA website, it says 2018.
Oh, I wouldn't give any credence to the...
No, let me get to my question.
No, that doesn't...
On the SHA website. But my question is, in terms of the, the speed camera and expected revenue, we've got very little revenue from that speed camera.
Right, we're not counting on that in our budget.
So that's, we'll likely end up with a little bit more revenue from there, although it might be offset by reductions somewhere else.
Yeah.
Okay. Last question, or last comment really, the, on the facilities maintenance budget, I would just want to spend some more time really looking into that number. Again, per my comment before about it becomes easy to just spend money that's built into the budget and something called a reserve, like these chairs, I'm not sure I want to replace these chairs this year. So I want to have that conversation and have it not just become very easy to spend money on things, which is what happens when they're, when money is set aside in the budget for, for general reserves. So I'm, I'm approaching the 300,000 for facilities maintenance with some skepticism.
Good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crashee.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, City Manager Ludlow. I thought your presentation was excellent and as somebody who feels strongly about it, as you talked about it in the context of racial equity, I think one thing, whenever we talk about the library, we talk about it as if it's this building in the other part of the city when it's an extension of this building, which I think making it even more vibrant than it is with the population that it services, which me and Councilmember Siemens today, and we had another meeting before this meeting, were able to observe in real time, the prospect of building this centerpiece institution in our community, which I think is one of the most vital institutions in this community. The fact that that is being incorporated into this budget in such a significant way, I appreciate that. And not to mention the Sligo Mill over at Park Playground. The question that I have...
He's easy.
Yeah. I am easy. The question that I have for you is, you said that each cent is about $224,000 as it pertains to the property tax. If we were to go from the 56 cents that you proposed down to the constant yield rate, that's about 2 and 1/2 cents, right?
Yeah, a little more than that. Because it's 53, 50...
53, 58.
So it's a little over 3 cents.
It's over 3 cents.
It's over 3 cents, yeah.
So that's 224,000 times that figure, times 3. So we're looking anywhere between 500 or 600.
That's what I'm saying, it's about in the $800,000 range, 750, 800,000 range.
You know, knowing the many budgets that I've gone through, as a rookie city council person, and assuming we get to a position where we're going to be having a discussion about splitting the baby or going down to the constant yield rate, it would just be helpful that as we have that discussion moving forward, to get some recommendations from you on areas where you think that we can survive some cuts if we are going to go down with the tax rate as part of our negotiations moving forward. Because I remember last year, we were all frantically doing math up here, and I think it would be, it would be good to have some, some sort of, you know, your recommendations as well as we approach that discussion, which I'm fairly certain we're going to have. And then the last thing is, I'll piggyback on two things that Councilmember Mill raised. The budget reserve policy is something that remains to be sort of a, an anomaly to me, and I think having a discussion about it, I think, would be helpful and would inform these types of discussions moving forward.
Right.
Irrespective of who's on the council. And then finally, the stormwater management fee, I agree, I think that if we are going to raise that, which most community members rightly perceive as a tax, I think we're going to want to see actual, real tangible examples of why. And I had an opportunity to go back because I wasn't here for the meeting, as you suggested...
You got to watch it.
Yeah, Ms. Braithwaite's presentation, but what, what, how are we going to improve our sort of speculation moving forward on whether we're going to get credit for things that we thought we were going to get credit for? Because otherwise, it's just a shot in the dark. And to people who own properties here, it's a real increase that has a real impact, consistent with the discussion that was, we had today about people on fixed incomes. And then I'd be curious to, to learn more about whether there are other municipalities that, that employ this type of process, whether treating different, single-family homes differently by virtue of size and surface area is something that's been done, and whether that's something that we should explore.
Thank you. And I think one of the things, somebody mentioned chicken and egg, and there's a little bit of that. When it comes to the stormwater fee, is that one of the things that we're planning on doing is having this survey to really determine impervious surface, but it also will help, I think, give us real data to look at different ways of paying for the stormwater fee and, and something that's more and more fair about who's causing more impact to the system and how that's calculated, and how to at some points, you know, give some credit for people who take extra efforts to improve stormwater quality with the rain gardens and that kind of thing. In order to do some of the very basic things, we still need more money. So one of the things that, you know, as you go through and think about this, if the stormwater fee is not increased, then it may need a contribution from the general fund into the stormwater fund as opposed to raising the stormwater fee. And so that, that starts then tax, taking money from taxpayers, not those who are the nonprofits that don't pay taxes. It may be the right answer for a year, but it, but over the long term, it kind of takes away from the whole purpose of the stormwater fee.
Thank you.
Wait, Council, Councilmember Coward, did you want to speak again?
No.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry.
The lights are all like wacky tonight.
My light is not working well.
Yeah, no, they're all wacky. Councilmember Smith, is your light on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. It gets better and better, I think, every year. First year when I was elected, I was just swimming out there trying to tread water. But now, I think I've got a better fix on the budget process. And you've helped a lot, so I want to thank you. A couple of questions. One, the Flower Avenue-Green Street project, there was a number of comments on the listservs about it, and some of the assertions were not true. And so what I would like from you is to provide almost like an infographic, and this comes from page 166 of the budget, that breaks down exactly how much money is coming from all these different sources, what the city's contribution is going to be, when we're going to make these contributions, and also how WSSC's money is going to come into play with the entire process. Because some people just see a big number and think that the city is paying $6 million, but that's just not the case.
Right.
So the amount of money that the city's actually going to contribute is fairly small compared to, you know, what we're doing in this project. The amount of attention that the city has gotten, I don't know if you could even get, pay for that for a million dollars, I mean, throughout the region. Everybody knows about the Flower Avenue-Green Street project. Now, let's move to the police department. If you look at the budget, it says that FY '17 adopted, there's a, there's a over $300,000 difference between that budget and what you're proposing for this year from the general fund. Can you explain why we have that?
Where are you looking at, sir?
Uh, hang on, hang on. I was looking at something else.
Then move to this slide.
Yeah.
76 adopted and projected.
And then FY '18, yep.
Which page are you on?
Page 17. Yep. So do you, can you just...
I'll have, I don't know it off the top of my head, I'll have to, I'll have to come back and provide information on, on that. And partly, you know, we had, in terms of expectations, expected amounts for FY '17, the number for the police department was considerably less because it took us a while to hire somebody for the neighborhood service team position. So partly, it's kind of a differences in some of the vacancies. The other thing is that we've put in a little bit of extra money because of the number of cadets that we have starting, and we're anticipating that there'll be a couple of people leaving the police department. So, so part of this is also just kind of our best guess about the timing of some of those changes in the police department. But we'll bring more detailed information about that.
Okay, appreciate it. Getting to the racial equity slides, I do appreciate it. Can you break those out and, so that I could share them?
Sure.
Okay. The one on the slide that broke down the demographics, the word five demos were those before we did redistricting?
No, I took this from the redistricting chart, and I was actually going to add it in, and I didn't at the last minute, but I'll make sure that each of you has that because it is useful.
Right, right. And then finally, you said it's only a 2.3% increase in expenses over last year.
Oh, yeah, overall operating expenses.
Right. Is there any way you could just break down one slide, one infographic that says, here are these expenses, and they only equal 2.3%? Is there any way we can do that?
We'll try.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Okay.
Round two?
Round two.
You get me for like five weeks, so just so you know.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know that. On the speed camera fund, revenues stabilized at about a 1.3 million a year. And 430,000 of that is indicated as to where the money goes. You mentioned in your comments that there's not as much money for sidewalks as that there used to be.
Right.
But if I subtract 430,000 from 1.3 million...
Yeah, you get a bunch.
I still got 870,000.
That goes for the services of the whole ticket processing and the equipment and all of the stuff that's related to the actual functioning of the speed camera system.
Really?
Yeah. We're hoping actually with, with the new bid to have that number go down.
Okay. Gee, all right, well, that's...
You thought you found it.
I know, it'd been great, man! I would love, I'd love another, what, 700, 800,000 bucks.
Shucks, okay. I thought maybe I'd found a $20 bill lying on the sidewalk. Second question. On the, on the stormwater fund, following up some of the thoughts shared by Councilmember Mill, there's, of that $90,000 or the increase to $92, part of that is projects that we deem necessary, or, when I say we, I'm not sure who we're talking about here, whether it's Ms. Braithwaite or yourself or us, necessary to build. Now... Now, who says what's necessary, I guess is my question. And, and, you know, independent, I'm saying that independent of what we are expected to do in terms of getting, you know, brownie points with regard to the state's evaluation of the quality and effect, impact of our work.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a puzzle. There's a certain amount that we're familiar with because we're familiar with the city and that, and the city engineer in walking, you know, section by, a section of the city knows where there's areas where we could do improvements for the stormwater quality in the city. The, the other part of that is the, is the puzzle about what gets us these, these points to, to help meet our criteria. And a lot of the ways of calculating that changed in the last year. And so it's, it's been kind of a whole learning curve, I think it's two years ago, a learning curve about how the state's looking at it, as Councilmember Mill said, you know, part of it is a lobbying thing in a way of, you know, we think these should count for more points or whatever. So there's a certain aspect of that. But we, we have to look at.
The media's not a germ.
We have to look at what we think is important to do. We have to look at what, what counts for these criteria so we're meeting the state requirements. And then we also have to look at how do we budget it over time so that we can even do the projects with the staff that we have or the contractors that we can oversee. And so it's, it's a bit of a puzzle.
Well, you know, getting these credits, we'll concede that it's important to do that, but if we don't, you know, what is the punishment? In other words, with, with, let me give you an example, with, if we don't build ADA compliant or retrofit ADA compliant sidewalks, we run up against the Department of Justice.
And we can be sued.
And all kinds, you know, suits and tremendous, severely penalties. But with regard to the state, and I mean, whatever, is, what?
I'm sure that they would have some penalties for us if we continue to, to kind of flaunt the issue, and I think Ms. Braithwaite addressed that a little bit in her presentation. I don't remember the actual aspects. I think the more important thing is, is our pride in, in protecting the environment and protecting the Sligo Creek and Long Branch and Acosta Watershed and Chesapeake Bay. And so part of it is just, is just recognizing that we feel really responsible for helping clean these bodies of water.
Yeah, yeah, right. Well, that, that's, that's a viable answer. I accept that and understand it. Let me, the last question I have has to do with the capital budget, projects and purchases. It was my understanding that the bid solicitation for the East and Allen Gateway project had, had gone out.
I think that it's, I, I, I'm not sure if it's actually done. I think I've seen the bid package sitting on the table, but somehow I think there was something that, that delayed it a little bit.
Oh, okay. So you're, you're thinking that it will go out?
It should be very soon.
Oh, okay. Because from what you were saying, what says we'll be going out to bid in early FY '18.
Yeah, I think.
I guess what you're referring to there is the opening of the bids and the awarding.
That's my understanding.
That's what you're.
I'll, I'll get more information when we discuss the capital projects.
Because one of the, one of the, another of the many unknowns is, of course, we don't know what the bids will look like.
Right.
And what the, what the acceptable bid will be in terms of how it compares to our estimates.
That's right.
And that's, that's, that's.
That's on all these projects, yeah.
Yeah. I'd just like to comment that, you know, this is an excellent presentation. It's so smooth and easy to understand that it disguises the, all the sweat and tears that go into preparing, I'm sure. And, and when it comes to the cost of personnel, you know, I think that's a little bit like trying, you know, standing on a slip, on a, on a banana peel, is that there's so many variables that can change within a fiscal year in terms of retirements and new hires and res, you know, and resignations and all that sort of thing, that it's a really kind of a snowball's guess. I guess that's not an actual metaphor. It's really difficult. You have to really ballpark it, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Right. One of the things that I'm really, if you ever want to see a complex Excel spreadsheet, you should see what Alexis Blackwell has in the, in the HR department, because she has this enormous, really interestingly colored spreadsheet of every staff person and everything that goes into the costs for them, whether it's the workers' compensation pieces or which kind of health insurance they have and the whole bit. And so she, she works with it and she has pretty good estimates about, about what it is, but as you said, you know, things can change. One of the things that I really appreciate about my staff is that even in this past, in this current year, when somebody has said, gee, I'd like to, I'm resigning, I have this thing, the department head goes and says, can I use this as an opportunity to realign staff to better meet council priorities? And in fact, they do that. And so it's, the, the numbers may not exactly equal because of, you know, somebody's got a more expensive health plan than, and chooses something else than another, but in, in sum, it's a very efficient way to look at, at staffing and getting the work done, and it's, and it's why there's virtually no change in FTEs from last, from this current year. Some, some, some people have kind of given up some position, positions in order to be able to allow other people to handle things, and it's pretty nice. So, you know, it, it, it is a little bit of a, the whole budget's a guess, I will say that.
Yeah.
But I think it's pretty close.
Thank you. I think that's a good explanation.
Councilmember Mill?
Yeah, I wanted to respond to Councilmember Kovar and Khrushchev's comments. Councilmember Kovar talked about the difference between how much we've, we budget in past years and then how much we actually spend, and we, we've, to my knowledge, in the last 10 years, it's always been more than millions in difference between what we budget in the council process and what we end up completing when we get through the consolidated financial report. And Councilmember Khrushchev talked about, you know, sort of identifying the reconciliation issues. One of the things that, that I think from my perspective I want to see is trying to get the police department budget to be flat compared to last year or flat with inflation.
Yeah, I think it's there.
No, it's bigger than that. What's the, it's the biggest increase in the departmental budget of all the budgets in terms of percent increase over 2017.
Okay.
And so from, from my perspective, there's 200 or 300,000 there that I would try to save. And, and just as background to that, when I look at the last sort of 10 years of budgets, the police department budget has grown far faster than, than almost every other budget, although general government sort of goes up and down based on policy issues. So from my perspective, it would be about trimming the police department budget to try to get the growth over time more on track with recreation department growth, public works, et cetera, housing, community development.
Yeah, I, I think when we go through that, there'll be a lot of aspects of that that will be explained, so like, I'm looking forward to sharing that information with you.
And I would just second that I would support Councilmember Mill's proposal with the flat closing.
I have a question on the, the sidewalks and the 500,000 for the ADA and including state highway.
Yeah.
How, I, I remember, we're pretty far ahead of the schedule, right, for our ADA work on the sidewalks? Well, we were doing pretty well.
We, I mean, the reason that we're starting to do state highways is we're, because we're pretty much completing the retrofit of, of the city sidewalks citywide.
I guess one of the questions I just had is, I mean, I think doing the work on state highways is essential, but given that we want to figure out a, a good process with state highway so that we don't have to go through their design and everything.
Right.
Is this the budget to put it in, or do we get that process and put it in another year's budget? That's.
I would hate to put it off. As Councilmember Mill mentioned, I mean, this has been something on our wavelength for some time. The, I would hope that our discussion with the administrator of state highway would, would facilitate us working with them better than, than it might otherwise be. I don't want to go into spending $200,000 on state highway sidewalks if that's just lost money because of process. So I, we will look at that really closely.
Okay. Because I hear what many of my colleagues are interested in looking at decreasing the tax rate, but as everyone said tonight, it was a great presentation, it's a pretty solid draft budget, and I think it's going to be difficult to find close to $800,000.
I think it will be difficult to find $800,000. There certainly are places, I mean, you don't have to put in 300,000 in the housing reserve, and there's some other places where you don't have to do certain projects. I think there's, those are some of the big ticket items that you can look at off the top of your head. I think that the other, the other issue, and as we look at it more very closely going forward, really is, you know, how do we, how do we keep the, the issue of paying ongoing expenses with ongoing funding as part of the, kind of the standard fiscally responsible approach to the budget? So I think that's one of the things we have to watch very carefully. And I think the other thing is just recognizing that the next couple of years are real unknowns. And part of the reason that I looked at putting in 300,000 in the housing reserve and money for the equipment replacement reserve and those kinds of things, is that if we have a significant downturn in, especially in income tax revenue or cuts from, on the intergovernmental funds from the county, we may need those funds for, for essential work. And, and so I think there's this little bit of hedging, recognizing that, you know, we don't have a lot of fluff, we're, we're a pretty skinny organization overall. You know, and I, one of the things that I, I, when I'm talking with people in other, other communities, they have a lot more staff for the level of services that they provide than we do. And so we, we really do try to keep it lean and mean, but, you know, if we have to cut it, those cuts really hurt. And so I, you know, going into this budget was a little bit different for me because it wasn't completely tight. It's why I even recommended a little bit of a decrease in the tax rate. I'm just really concerned about FY '19 and FY '20, and it's my responsibility to look in that long-range outlook on behalf of the city overall. And, and that's, you know, people put their tax money and expect that their tax money is, is protected. And so I think that that's part of, you know, you'd like to keep the rates down, and I appreciate that. There's some ways to do that, but I think we have to be really careful about it. And.
Well, I think also, the way I look at it is, well, keeping, it's, it's a balance. It's figuring out what that balance is. But if, I think as you reported before when you were doing your presentation, reducing the tax rate overall is not going to necessarily make our community any more affordable.
Right.
For people.
That's right.
I think the reality is, is that we live very close to Washington DC, we have excellent schools, excellent amenities, and our housing price, our single-family housing prices are going up.
Right.
And that's regardless of what our tax rate is going to be. And the question is, is truly, it goes back to what are our values? And if we want to remain a welcoming, inclusive community, we need programs like our home stretch program. We need to figure out when we get the report back, what other things we can do, programs we can put in place so that we can be an affordable community.
Right.
But that's not going to happen by reducing our tax rate.
Yeah, the other thing, just, you know, we, we don't know what's going to happen at the county level, but the county executive did propose a two and a half cent tax decrease. So there's, you know, that, that does make a difference for, for residents.
Great. All right. Well, it's 10:15. Hopefully, folks will be back tomorrow night for the open house.
That's right.
In the azalea room, and.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Now we are adjourned.